stands, "One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all."
Just for a moment of silence. Thank you. Start off with citizen concerns, round one. Anybody to speak to anything that is not on the agenda, please come forward.
Becca Soknot, Woodbury County Emergency Management. I just wanted to take a couple of minutes and bring it to the board. I'm sure you guys have seen all over the media lately that we are in a countywide burn ban. That was a unanimous vote of all of the rural fire chiefs. And we did reach out to the city of Sioux City at that point back on February 20th. We are just making our rounds again because it seems like several people maybe have forgotten about it or think that it was rescinded. However, it has not been. So what that means is more or less if anybody wants to burn, we're urging them to reach out to their local fire chiefs. So even in the rural communities, if you have a law and address, go ahead and call the city clerk or call the fire chief directly and just touch base with them first. I know on my way here, there's another fire between the mobile homes just north of Sergeant Bluff and I-29. So again, it's just extremely dry out there. And to protect life and property, not only of our residents of the county, but our responders as well, we just really are asking if we can get that out as much as possible. Thank you.
That probably includes no flamethrowers at the shooting range?
That would, and that would be correct. Check with your local fire chief first.
Okay.
So a lot of what we've seen, especially over the weekend, seems to be the permitted burn barrels with the grades. People walk away from them thinking they're out and they are not. So again, it would be considered an incidental fire. I know our sheriff's office has been getting called because with that burn ban in place, there is the possibility of fines. So again, it's just more of a public awareness and asking the public to help us help them. Thank you.
Thank you. Come on up.
I've been to the post offices on my mailbox. They have no problem with it?
Go ahead and state your name and address again real quick.
Say what?
Name and address real quick for the record.
Benjamin, Climen Hill. And my mailbox got taken again in December because nobody else's was taken down. And this time, he destroyed it. Here's a diagram of the Mobile Post Office. That's all they say. Here's what he did to my mailbox. He took it off. Here's what it looked like. There's no, he moved it like on the 21st and then the 27th of December, when I got home from surgery, it was destroyed. He broke the gnomes out of it and the gnomes are very expensive. He broke the legs off of them, broke the glass. And here's another picture of it. So what right did he have to tear it apart?
Who are you referring to? Is he?
I assume Mark, the county engineer gave the orders. The foreman and horne did it. Four days later after he took it, he destroyed it. And nobody else had had their mailboxes moved. They'd been up here a year and a half ago.
Do you mind if we take a look at your picture?
There's the front of the school. That's where he did it. That's destroying property. That's just like calling somebody's car away. They're calling somebody's car away and they do it a second time and get knocked the windows out of it because he did it the second time. And nobody else is moving their cars?
Like, how do I look at these?
Yeah, you take them. This is kind of uncalled for. I mean, you don't destroy somebody else's property. They had glass windows in it and they broke them out. They had little gnomes in there and they had fuxty glass over it. That was lying in my driveway, that mailbox. And I talked to the postmaster in Des Moines. So I don't see the problem. It's movable, it'll slide off.
Can we get Mr. Nara up here to?
Sure.
Get some answers?
There's no law against, I mean, it's... They could sit on a platform. It's movable. It's a breakaway. So why was it destroyed?
Oh, I have to have somebody else speak on that? It's not us, but...
I think we're going to hear from our county engineer in responses as a first we're learning of this, if that's fair.
In compliance with 318 of the code, the mailbox was determined to be an obstruction in the right of way. It was on a larger than breakaway support. Breakaway support's considered anything smaller than a four-by-four or a two-pound-per-foot steel post. We had sent multiple notices to Mr. Benjamin to have those removed. The diagrams that he showed there for Mowville show a post of that nature. That tree trunk was big enough that it took a loader to move it. It had been removed from the location once and then moved back. We moved it to the school intact and asked him not to put it out there again. We put up a temporary mailbox. It was moved back to the location a third time. This time we moved it. We were going to toss it in our burn pile, but it's disappeared since then. So it did not comply with the order given him by the county road department and on behalf of the county board of supervisors. He was told one of the times when he came in here to this room, appealing to the board, that he needed to remove it in compliance with the orders that he had received. I spoke with the postal inspector who was investigating the situation. I explained to him that the support did not meet our requirements. The postal inspector took that response and I'm assuming was satisfied with it. So again, we required to be on a four-by-four post or cut down to that size. We have a number of other mailboxes that as soon as the ground is fit for digging and people can put in a compliant post, those folks will be getting letters too. We typically don't enforce this during the winter. Currently has his mailbox on a stack of cinder blocks, which also don't meet our requirements. But we're giving him a deferment until it's fit to drill a hole and put in a properly sized post. I don't know what else to say. The, we had three other mailboxes that were built out of brick and concrete. Those were required to be moved. We've served notice on a number of them throughout the county. And when they're pointed out to us, we try to send a letter to get those folks in compliance. And again, I think that illustration is one that the post office has on their website, which shows a much smaller post and support than what he was utilizing out there.
There's nothing in writing on this. How come the post office can't find it? They have no regulations. All they got is that. And I don't think he sent letters to everybody. Because how come they got their mailboxes still there? And this is going on for a year and a half. I was up here in March. I moved my mailbox like you guys asked me to and nobody else did it. I waited 60 days. I put it back. Then he stole it, his first time. And nobody else did nothing. So I put it back again.
I didn't go to write to move back. Again, we have 1,300 miles of road. I don't know how many rural residents. Our first priority is to check in mailboxes.
So what did, what?
You have a 4:40 hearing.
So why'd you destroy it? He didn't have the right to tear it apart.
So?
That's destroying damn, that's personal property.
We return it to you, you put it back in the...
It don't matter. It's personal property. You don't tear somebody's mailbox apart.
So we're going to have to cut off discussion here on this, move on to approval of the agenda. I'll move the approval of the agenda.
Second.
Motion by Raddick, second by DeWitt. All those in, or any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? I'm going to skip ahead to our set time, which is, from Board Administration, that's a public hearing on the proposal to sell the county farm. We are now in a public hearing. Is anybody to be heard for or against the sale of the county farm?
We've had it here a moment.
You heard four?
Ah, this is the 4:40 set time on the county farm. We got to do it. Did you have somebody on the phone about it, Karen? No? Okay. Anybody to be heard on the?
Hearing none. I move we close the public hearing.
I'll second. Motion by DeWitt, second by Raddick. Any discussion? All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes five to zero. Moving on to... Is this on this agenda item, Karen, or what was it? Oh, it is. Okay.
It's just in your head, Dennis. There's no music.
Ah. Ah.
This is right now a public hearing.
Did they?
We can come back to that, but right now we have to...
4:40?
You know who, yeah, we're... Oh, okay. It's over? Okay. So we have 12B, which is approval of proposal to sell the county farm as set forth in the Board's Resolution Number 13, Cal 401, dated March 1st of 2022.
So move to...
I'll second. Motion by Taylor, second by Raddick. All right. Any discussion? It was motion by Taylor, second by Raddick. All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That passes five to zero. So I guess as far as any discussion you're going to have with the engineer, as far as property and, and, you know, the board of supervisors is not taking a position as far as, you know, whether or not we feel the engineer's doing his job or not, or whether or not you are entitled to something or not. I think that's something if you feel you've been wronged, you might have to seek out an attorney to take care of that. At least that's my position as board chair, but, you know, the supervisors can take a different position if they like. But this is not a dispute that we typically involve ourselves in.
I tried to talk to county attorney. He wouldn't return my calls.
So that's...
I think Chairman Raddick was talking about a private attorney. I have been involved. So I would advise Mark and the board on legal issues for the county. And Mark has consulted me on this and my understanding is when the action was taken, that the board chair was also in the loop on it. So my position and based on the code that Mark referenced and the letter that explained it to you, it was within Mark's ability to remove it. And then you were aware that it was an obstruction and that it couldn't be there. To return it to the right of way, it's similar to an abandoned property situation. Mark could have destroyed it the first time and it was a courtesy to you that he returned it to you. But then when he put it back out there, it was within Mark's ability to destroy that, to ensure that the instruction, obstruction wouldn't be out there again. So that's our position. Like Keith said, if you want to talk to an outside attorney or whatever you feel is appropriate, you may disagree with it, but that's the action we took.
How come nobody else's is moved? It's a year and a half ago it started. Not one been moved.
Well, and there's other ones that Mark's consulted with me on. And I know some letters have gone out. Ultimately, that's irrelevant to whether the county was within the law in removing yours.
Can I get a copy of those letters that he sent everybody? Like he said he did a year and a half ago?
You'd have to talk to Mark about that.
Well, he's going to say no. You know that?
Well, have you asked him?
I went around and talked to people. He said, "We never got no letters." That one guy's got a channel liner and he black topped around it. We're retired. He said, "Black topped around it two years ago." Why is he harassing me? Why did he cut my tree down? He come in my yard and cut my tree down. A walnut tree. It was in my yard. Something's going on here. We got to do something. Can't keep going on like this. You can't come in somebody's yard, destroy their mailbox, cut their walnut tree down and just walk away and think nothing about it.
Right of way or your yard? That's the, it seems to be the rub.
You got to figure it out because something's going to happen.
Is that a threat?
No, 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 no. I have to go get an attorney. Like I said, I mean, I ain't threatening nobody. You know?
Where's the property at?
There's the reason why. That retaining wall. If he's worried about a darn old mailbox, I've got a retaining wall. It's supposed to have been fixed in 93. That'll kill somebody. This mailbox will not. So why is this mailbox more important than that retaining wall? And he worked on that highway because it undermined it. And he was going to do it there. All he got to do is put a culvert through it and bury it. That's what they was going to do in 93 when I put that wall. That hasn't been done. So I don't understand why this mailbox so important.
This on Mowville black top or?
Yes, right in, I'm right in Climen Hill, right in town. And those old pickups are still there. We had, the guy got three letters. They're still sitting there on the right of way.
Can you, Mark, can you provide a history of letters sent to these other complaints? Is that a potential?
Yeah, we have them in the file. Just have to pay the duplication costs on each of the letters that he's requesting.
How much is that?
50 cents is what the auditor's office sent it.
That's... If you want copies of all the letters, it's basically 50 cents per duplicate print amount for you, is what he's saying. It's a FOIA request.
FOIA request?
Like Freedom of Information Act request.
Do a bunch of retainable.
I don't know. That's something, like you said, that's not something we're doing.
I thought he was looking at that.
No, no. I was trying to see where it was at on the...
It's right across from the mailbox.
Okay.
Same culvert. You hit that mailbox, you're hitting my culvert.
Yeah.
Or your culvert.
Well, as far as where we're at on this, I mean, we can't do anything for you as a board of supervisors. If you want to seek outside legal help, that would be our recommendation. But in general, we're going to have to move on to next round.
I don't know why we have your attorney. I wonder why you just can't settle and say do it.
Well, because you're at an impasse. He says you can't have it. You say you want it, right?
There's no laws on it.
But he says, he says there is.
He says it. I don't care what he says. I don't blame the postmasters.
We're, like I said, we're not here to settle that for you. That's why you need an attorney. So. Thank you. Any other citizen concerns? Anything not on the agenda? All right. So we approve the agenda. We're on to the consent agenda. Items three through nine constitute a consent agenda routine action items to be considered by one motion. Items pass unanimously unless a separate vote is requested by a board member. Item three is approval of the minutes of the March 18, uh, March 8th, 2022 meeting. Item four, approval of claims. Item five from Board of Administration, approval and notice property sale resolution of the parcel known as 1006 Dubuque Street for Tuesday, March 29th at 4:35 PM. Item six from Human Resources, approval of memorandum of personnel transactions. Item seven from Community Action Agency of Sulaan and Jean Logan, A, is approval of reappointment Rochelle Green to the Community Action Agency of Sulaan Board of Directors, and B, approval to appoint Jill Wandershead to the Community Action Agency of Sulaan Board of Directors. Item eight from the county auditor, approve the application for a 12-month Class C liquor license, LC Commercial with outdoor service, and Sunday sales privileges for Anthem Golf Course effective 4/1 of 2022. And item nine for secondary roads, approve the permit to work in right of way for the Brown Lake area homeowners. All right. Any discussion on anything on the consent agenda?
I move approval of consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by DeWitt, second by Taylor. Any discussion at all? All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That passes five to zero. Moving on to item 10 from the Deputy Commissioner of Elections, Steve Hoffmeyer, second tier canvas of the Westwood CSD, special election held March 1st, 2022. Thank you, Mark.
Hello, Steve Hoffmeyer with the Auditor's Office. I've got the second tier canvas here of the special election for Westwood Community School District. We had to combine in the Monona County results, so we've got those added in here. So I've got the canvas for you guys to receive and sign off on along with the abstract of votes for those.
Same results?
There were two additional yes votes from Monona County. That's all they had in the school district that voted in that election.
So it was an overwhelming support?
Yes.
All right. I'll move to, what is this? Is it receive? Is that what it is? I'll move to receive.
Second.
Motion by Raddick, second by Taylor. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes five to zero.
Thank you.
All right. Well, we're going to move on to item 11 from Building Services, which is approve Impact 7G's Inc. Professional Service Agreement dated 3/4/22 in the amount of $19,970.
Kenny Schmitz, Building Services Director. Back in September, Impact 7G did some studies for us and provided us some background information on hazardous material inventory and asbestos-containing materials out at the Prairie Hills County Farm building. With that complete, the next step toward a demolition process would, would be to hire an architect or an engineer to be in compliance with the competitive bidding laws of Iowa. And so we've asked Impact 7G to provide a contract agreement for those services or drafting those services for us. That amount would be $19,970. And I'd answer any questions anyone might have.
Where is this getting paid through by? Is this CIPA? Okay.
Call incorporation of project cost.
Yeah, I'll point out we can use ARPA funds for building demolition potential.
I defer that to our attorney. I don't think we can, but...
Haven't looked at that specifically, but I would doubt if that would be an option.
I'll go ahead and move it unless there's other discussion.
Second.
Motion by Taylor, second by DeWitt. Any discussion on it? All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Say nay. Nay. Passes four to one. Nothing against you. Love the stash, you know? I think it's already in the other bin too. All right. Moving on to item 13 from Board of Supervisors, Matthew Young. Jeremy Taylor authorizes a request for proposal regarding selection of law firm for collective bargaining and union negotiations and for that RFP to return to board for approval at a future meeting.
Well said. I'll just start by reading from the executive summary. "The RFP process is a good one to engage in from time to time in order to ensure that the county is getting the best possible service on behalf of working families and property taxpayers. Woodbury County will have six collectively bargained-for units and deserves high-quality representation. The last time Woodbury County went through an RFP process for this purpose is unknown to us, but it has been many years and is quite overdue. Deciding this now is timely as one bargaining unit is scheduled for reopening next year and several in the following years. And the retention of Hydman Law Firm for purposes of human resources matters is unchanged by this item as we have been pleased with excellent high-quality representation there." So I think this is a healthy, certainly a periodic step in consulting county department heads and employees. It's hard to know when the last time this was done, but it, just to provide some transparency to the process and to make sure that we're getting the best bang for our bucks, so to speak, I think that certainly every 10 or so years, it makes sense to look at what our options are. This absolutely does not preclude us from retaining the same law firm that we have used for this purpose. But I think it's just, you know, get a reset and get some, you know, proposals before us so we know what, what the options are, what the expertise is. With some transitions in the, in the law firm we've used, it's a good time as well. And the process we propose is, is similar to that when the county engineer presents us with a, with some bids and then we refer to his office for recommendation. I'm willing to serve on a work group. I know Supervisor Taylor is as well. We recommend the HR Director and Assistant County Attorney to be with us and look at proposals that are set forward. What this item is about is simply to give the boards signal to County Attorney's Office. I know Mr. Widman is willing to help the board craft an RFP, which would include specifics like a deadline to receive bids and a procedure for that. And at that time, the board would make a, make a motion to receive and hopefully to recommend or, or refer for recommendation. Whole process hopefully wouldn't take more than two months and would be done before we are, are needing of their services. So anyone have any thoughts or different opinions on that?
All well said.
Well, not to cut off any discussion, but just so we have a motion, I'll move to authorize the request for proposals regarding the selection of a law firm for collective bargaining and union negotiations and for that RFP to return to the board for approval at a future meeting.
Second.
So we have a motion by Ong and a second by Taylor. Any other discussion on this item?
Thank you to the Attorney's Office for their help in crafting an R F P that all at least help review and, and put on the agenda for board approval, so we'll know what exactly we've, we're setting out on.
All right, no other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, that passes five, zero. And going to reports on committee meetings. Anybody? Let me go back to my calendar here. Obviously, let's see, Simco Exec, we just renewed the contract with Michelle Boston Ellis to keep her on as our Executive Director for another three years. And that was basically all that was really voted on.
Sula District Health Meeting, something of interest is they, they did replicate what Woodbury County did for our employees regarding the twenty-seven pay periods. They drew upon funds they had available in the existing budget to provide a incentive bonus of, I believe, three hundred fifty dollars, which equated to the same action we did, get everyone up to that four percent since they had previously approved three-something, I believe.
All right, citizen concern round two.
I just wanted to mention really quickly and recognize the Sula Health District on those efforts to get those improved septic systems going down at the Browns Lake area. Browns Lake has long been an impacted watershed. During the summer, there's times where there's no swimming allowed because of high biological issues in the, in the lake and, you know, with utilizing some of the COVID money and some grants available through the state of Iowa. You'll see another round of permits next week for approval where they're putting in the improved septic systems.
Kind of hate that we're wasting all this money on septic systems when we just need to run sewer pipes down there.
It, it's a long run for the town of Salix though.
Yeah.
And a very flat run.
Yeah.
But, you know, pumping can do a lot.
Yep.
But it, it is a substantial improvement for those residences down there compared to what they used to have. Before I got here, the, there was a very controversial meeting held about sewer down there at Salix that got very contentious as, as I've been told.
Sure.
At least in the interim, this should take care of some of the issues down there. But I've appreciated working with them and I've got their assurance that those outlets in the ditch are fully legal and, and no health issues or problems with them discharging to the right ways.
Sure. I just think it's a shame before we spend all that money on septic, you know, some of those lots are too small to even like put a real well or tank on.
Right, some of them have a fifty-foot setback between well and septic, which is twenty-five feet short. They've got a, a special determination to allow that apparently in those situations. Yeah, it's, it's, it's a challenging place to deal with.
Yeah.
Just ask Mark some information that from H I S A last week. I know this is dangerous, but could you briefly tell us about the local options?
Yes. A new bill has appeared in legislature. It was put out there on the ninth of March. The bill proposes to eliminate the local option sales tax and replace it with an additional one-cent sales tax. The bill provides that one-seventh of the money would be returned to the municipality in which it is collected. I assume they would also return that one-seventh to the county in which it's collected. This would be a substantial loss for Woodbury County as under the local option sales tax, all the cities and the rural area participated in the referendum that established the local option sales tax. That money is split among the jurisdictions. The county gets roughly two-point-six million, I think. There's a couple hundred thousand for economic development. Two-point-four million of the money that we get offsets our local property taxes. If the local option sales tax is rescinded and the provision in the bill says anyone established on or before January one, twenty twenty-three shall no longer be valid. We would lose that two-point-six million. We would collect somewhere around two-hundred thousand to two-hundred-and-forty thousand based on a couple of quarterly statements from the Treasurers or the Department of Revenue that I was able to access over the weekend. But we'd be down to roughly ten percent of what our receipts are now. In real dollars, I sent a sheet off to you guys today. That would be a two-million-dollar increase in property taxes that we would have to put into place July one, twenty twenty-three. With this bill taking effect January one, twenty twenty-three, we'd also lose a half a year's revenue. At a minimum, that would probably be about one-point-two million dollars that we would count up short on our minimum local effort. D O T would take that away from us in Road Use Tax Fund after July one in the fiscal year twenty twenty-four effort, so. This is a lot of money that we're talking about that the county could potentially lose over the year. Now, this board's, I think, done a great job since nineteen eighty-eight with property tax relief utilizing that money as was intended by the referendum. They've utilized it to keep those real property taxes low. This proposed bill undoes that. I've contacted or reached out to our representatives and senators to discuss the concerns with that bill. I sent a summary to all the board members. I don't know if you've had a chance to check your email yet today, but it, it's my hope this one will not see the light of day. It's currently in committee. And the committee sponsor is the bill sponsor. So it's likely to get out to the floor, I guess. But I don't know if the board had any questions about it, but.
Who, who's on the committee that's sponsoring the bill?
Dawson is the one I noticed.
Okay. Who else is on that committee? Do you know?
The subcommittee, I can't remember who the three on the subcommittee were. But Dawson is the chairman for Ways and Means, so.
Okay, so Ways and, yeah. We don't have anybody locally on Ways and Means?
Smith might be.
Okay.
I think, I think Jack was on Ways and Means.
Thank you very much for sending those letters.
Well, again, it's, it's pretty important revenue to us if. I would hope they would at least postpone it till July one because that's putting not only Woodbury County, but the other forty-nine counties that have a local option sales tax. That's putting it right in the middle of our fiscal year where it really affects everybody's budget.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. So do you have something there too? Sure, perfect time.
Move to adjourn, Chairman.
I know where to find you, Rocky. Good afternoon, guys. I'm Patrick Todd. I'm the Chief Judge for the Third District District. I'm here today primarily just to bring you guys up to speed on some issues the court's gonna be facing over the course of the next several months, leading up to the move to the new jail, hopefully next March. I think it was around schedule for March.
Somewhere between March and June, I believe, last I heard.
So in regards to that, the primary issue, I'll jump ahead on my, my list. I've got four things that I'll try and go through this quick with you guys. With the move to the new L E C next year, right now, the existing L E C, the basement, and Rocky has seen it, I don't know if the rest of you have seen it. But it's jammed about as tightly as you can get with court files, from wall to wall, floor to ceiling. And those files obviously are gonna have to be moved somewhere when the move to the new jail takes place and the, and the existing facility is, I assume, demolished in the not-too-distant future. The courts have examined the possibility of, you know, digitizing the files, but the cost of that is astronomical and it's not a, not a problem solution. Peggy, Court Administration has talked to Kenny and I brought it to Rocky's attention. We went over and looked at the situation. Seems, a year from now seems like a long time, but the amount of files we've got to move and the need to find a location for it. Something's gonna probably need to be decided sooner rather than later. First, the location has to be found and the mechanism for moving, everything has to be determined. So I just want to make sure the board is aware of that, that problem. It's not something we can take care of next January or February. It's something we're gonna have to figure out.
Please tell me there's an elevator from that basement.
Yeah, but part of the thing too is Kenny has been looking at Tross泊 Hoyt as a potential site for storing some of those files, but it's an, it's an, it's hundreds of tons, literally.
Say the weight alone could.
And the weight alone, I don't think that building was designed for that kind of stresses. Plus, we had a, I think Kenny brought in an engineer or an architect to look at some of the issues. We had a wall separating. So I think it's still a little up in the air on whether or not Tross泊 Hoyt will be viable to put all those. And then.
And the court intends to pay for the new shelving or whatever we need to do to put the files into. We intend to incur those costs. We just don't have any place physically to do it. And so we're seeking help from the board to help locate a feasible location.
Is there space within the L E C footprint that they've talked about?
I think so. I, yeah, I think we, I think we have space out there, but, but like anything, you build it and it's never, it's, all of a sudden, it's full, you know. I think we did, we did expand what we called shell space. Has the potential to be used for, for some of those file storage, but it's, it's, it's still a little up in the air and, and I'd hate to see them split two, two places where this stuff's gonna go, but.
Right, and actually, you know, the clerk doesn't have to get into these files all the time, but they do from time to time have to get into them. So it's gonna need to be organized where the clerk knows where things are, knows where to go to find them and can get to them without too much difficulty.
And, and if I remember right, excuse me, we will have at least a couple of clerks out there?
There'll be at least a couple of clerks at the new facility.
So even if, even if all that material is out there in the future, they would have access to it. And, and by the way, it does have to be secured because it is so.
Exactly, so there's, there's other issues than just finding a closet.
Yeah, it's not.
Closet is an understatement of massive proportions.
If the boxes were stacked, one on top of the other, it would easily fill this room to the ceiling.
Is it literally tons?
Tons.
Does new business add to that volume?
No, no, because A D M S, it's been in place now for the last ten years. Everything is digital now going forward, so this is all just for the old stuff. There's nothing gonna be added to it.
How long does it need to be retained?
Perpetually. That's the problem.
How much was the cost to digitize?
Talking in the seven figures.
Really?
That's labor.
Because of manpower?
The whole thing, yeah.
So whenever we get to know the new superintendent at the public schools, we need to ask him to create a digitizing class.
Drive down the scanning wages.
The initial reaction is you just digitize it, but once you do the investigation and find out the cost, it's, can't be done.
Is that due to the volume or the security of while you're handling it?
Majority of it, I think, is from the volume. You, you'd be amazed if you walked over to the basement of that facility and took a look.
Just chuckling at the idea, just one paper total, a couple tons of paper.
So that was my, my first, first issue. Secondly, and you may or may not be aware of this, but Court Administration Room two-ten upstairs, where the District Court Administrator, the clerks, not the clerks, but the schedulers and Assistant District Court Administrator are currently located, is going to be remodeled sometime early summer, late summer of this year. The state's going to pay for all the new furniture, the new partitions. They're gonna re lay out the office space to create more, I think there's gonna be three private offices now where currently there's only one and all those type of things. State's incurring, Justice Branch is incurring the cost for all the furniture, the partitions, all those type of things. What we would like the county to do though, while that's tore apart, it'd be an ideal time to paint walls, put down new carpeting when everything is gutted. And we'd be making a request at some point in the near future for the board to consider that expense for painting and carpeting. There's also a slight possibility that there may need to be some electrical work to move outlets, depending upon the layout of the new partitions and whatnot. As I stand here today, I don't think that's gonna happen, but that is a slight possibility where we need to have maintenance, be involved with moving electrical items.
Judge, are you in, in touch with Kenny on those things?
Peggy has been talking to Kenny and Kenny has told her that once it's cleared out, they could do the painting and the carpeting in less than a week. And so we try and coordinate that with, whenever we're able to get, who knows when we're gonna be able to get these new partitions and the new furniture. And when it can come in, we'd try and schedule that to where he could come in, do the carpet, do the painting, and the next group can come in the following week to set everything up. So that would be one, one request we're gonna be making. Another significant one deals with some office space needs that we have. We're gonna be adding a senior judge most likely in July when Judge Poulsen retires. He's indicated to me that he's gonna be giving me his notice of intent to retire probably the end of this month, the first of April, with an effective date sometime the first week of July. And he intends at this time to apply for senior status, which I anticipate will be approved by the Supreme Court without much difficulty. And of course, his district position would then be replaced, so his office space would be used by a new district judge that would take his place. But we need someplace to house a senior, another senior judge. Right now, we've been using the sixth floor and you've made available to us office space for Judge Ackerman and Judge Hoffmeyer. There's also office space on the sixth floor being used by Kara Holland, one of the court reporters. Two law clerks are in an office space and have been in the office space on the sixth floor for a long time. And we've become aware that there's a new office, or office space has become available on sixth floor and there's a second potential office space on sixth floor as well that we could certainly use and we would like to with the board's consent to use one of the offices for Judge Poulsen as a senior judge. But also, we need another office space for what I'm gonna call traveling judge. So for example, when Judge Saylor from Dennison or Judge Neary from Plymouth, you know, comes to Woodbury County, they don't have a designated office per se like I do. I'm in two oh seven, every day I'm here. When Judge Saylor comes from Crawford, he goes wherever we have space for him, where we can find him and squeeze him in. With the move to the new jail next spring, all the criminal functions of the court are moving to the new building. And as a result, we're gonna have magistrates coming to the main courthouse, coming to this building to do their civil work, because we're gonna do everything civilly. All the civil proceedings are gonna be here. All the criminal proceedings are gonna be at the new facility. Magistrates do both, so they'll, they'll be part of their time at the new facility when they're doing their criminal dockets. But they're also gonna have to come here to this building to do their civil dockets, which they never did before. They've always done that at the law enforcement side. So we're gonna need to find at least one office space for the magistrate, which is gonna be pretty much every day on the second floor. I think we've got that resolved. There's a, there's a space off the Equity Court Room that I think we can convert into a magistrate office space, but that'll take away some space, for example, where Judge Neary currently tends to flop when he comes, for lack of a better word, to Woodbury County. That'll probably be used by the magistrate. So that creates, again, the need for the space for the traveling judge, Judge Neary and Judge Saylor, or whoever it might be, and then also space for a senior judge. And we, we'd like it to all be on sixth floor, so we're together, you know, all the senior judges, all the law clerks, the court, the court reporters there is all on the same floor and we don't end up being scattered throughout the building. So just to give a heads up, that's a request that the branch is gonna make for some extra office space.
Judge, who's vacating the sixth floor offices that you alluded to?
Glazer.
Glazer.
Okay. So that would take over that footprint of economic development where that's.
Well, that's, that's their dream, if you will.
That's, that's what we'd like to see happen. And I, I understand that's dependent if he's replaced, you may have to put the same person back there and then the office might not be available. But as I understand it now, his office is empty and there's a separate, it's used as a conference room that's empty that could easily be converted into an office space.
And you would need that as well, the, that conference area potentially?
You know, honestly, I'd have to go back up there and look around, probably with the judge or Peggy and, and, and kinda, kinda get an idea, but if anybody else would wanna be involved, I'd encourage it too, but but, but like he says, it's dependent on whether or not we replace the, the R E D, so.
And the County Attorney's Office is gonna be moving next spring too, or the majority of the County Attorney's Office is gonna be moving next spring, which will open up, I think, the third floor. I can never keep straight who's on the third and who's on the fourth.
Right. And I'm not sure if we have a plan as far as which floor we're gonna consolidate the remaining attorneys on, but we currently have all of third. Well, and all of fourth as well, but it's split into two different offices between fine collections and indictable. but we currently have all of third, well, and all of fourth as well, but it's split into two different offices between fine collections and, uh, indictable.
And I, IT is already talking about absorbing into one of the other floors too when county attorney moves out. So, we might have quite the interdepartmental.
Battle for space. But there will be extra space available on the third or fourths where hopefully this all can work out. It's just, from our selfish perspective, it just makes sense to have all the court personnel on one floor. You know, seven, six, instead of being spread between second, third, and sixth, however it might be. So, again, this is more just for informational, the, the, it's a need we're going to have, and more formal requests we're probably.
Are there any existing shortcomings in the current spaces on sixth floor, or those are working out?
No, those are working out fine, but there's, there's a couple of issues about the sixth floor space they want me to, to address with you guys here today. But otherwise, the space is adequate for, there's room for Hoffmeyer, there's room for Ackerman, there's room for, uh, the clerks and the court reporter. So, the space is adequate for what we're using it for now. We just need additional space coming forward. One, one issue on the sixth floor is that exists though, and primarily in Judge Hoffmeyer's office and the court reporter's office, which would be on the, uh, wall facing Seventh Street, I guess it is. There are no window coverings of any kind. It's just open glass, and it causes two problems. One, light, the glare, the windows, uh, off computer screens and the difficulty that raises in and of itself, but also the temperature control. The, the glass is like paper thin, and in the wintertime, it is freezing in there. And, uh, so they would like to get some type of blinds or shades or some type to solve both of those issues in those offices.
I know where there's an old bookcase we could.
Yeah, sure is. If you can move it up there, it might solve the problem. But, uh, something like that that wouldn't be a high-cost item would solve, you know, the vision problems and at least alleviate the temperature problems in those offices a, a little bit. And that, that also applies, and I, I forgot to mention this, on, on, uh, the second floor remodel of Court Administration. They have the same problem with cold along the windows on the alleyway there. It's just, it's almost unbearable for the ladies back there when it gets terribly cold, especially when it's windy out. It's like the windows are open, you know, it gets so cold in the temperature. So, we'd also like to request or encourage that maybe some type of shading or blinds at least be put there to slow down the wind, to help with the temperature, uh, for those new, the new offices that are going to be put in there, in spaces.
Is that kind of his furniture?
That's a good question. No, I don't know if your furniture would be accessory sometime, but, uh, you know, the, the difficulty, furnishing, yeah. The difficulty obviously we always have is that with a historical building, you know, I can't do anything in my office without getting this maintenance approval. I can't hang a picture, you know, let alone put blinds up or anything like that. So, I think that's something the board would have to address anyway. It would, to some minimal extent, alter the, the building. Could have to drill holes or do whatever to put up blinds, type of thing. The last thing I had on my, my list deals with, uh, parking. And this goes again, hand in hand with the move to, to the new LEC. Right now, we have eight, you folks graciously provide eight parking spots for judicial branch employees behind the LEC. There are, uh, four DHAs that park back there currently, uh, two district judges, and three senior judges that, when they're working, share spots behind the LEC. I'm assuming when the LEC's torn down, those parking spaces will disappear as well. And so, I don't know what we're going to do for parking for those judicial officers. The three DHAs that are moving to the new building, that's no big deal. They're, they're going to have their parking out there, but we're still going to have five judicial officers that are going to need someplace to park. Judge Forker Parish is still going to be in the house every day. Judge Cord's going to be in Trosper Hoyt significantly, probably twenty or thirty percent of his time. And the senior judges that are coming to the courthouse to work, you know, will need someplace to park. So, I just wanted to, you know, put that on the radar, that that's going to be an issue in that building and those parking spaces are done away with.
Is there any issue, uh, parking on the street if there's a placard that's what we've done now, or has that become difficult when somebody comes in for a limited amount of time or travels in? Is that a, an acceptable solution potentially?
Any option would be, possibility, yeah. And I would, personally, I, initial reaction would be I wouldn't be opposed to that, you know, if we're in the same, within a block or some of the building or something. Obviously, with judicial officers in particular, security is always an issue, so we don't want them walking too far. And I've meant, and I didn't have this on my list today, so I won't really talk about it, but I have some concern with judicial officers going through the front doors and having, having to go through the front doors every day. If we're going to, something's going to happen to us, it's going to happen coming in or out of the building. So, I've always been a little airy about, you know, it's been many years now since all the access, all the entrances have been sealed off except for the one. And I understand why, but it does create a security, it solves a security problem by having the metal detector for everybody to have to go through, but it creates a new security problem for us because we have to be there and be right in the middle of everybody all the time. But that's another, that's another presentation for another day, but that's another concern that I do have. So, the parking would just be the same type of thing, so we're not too far away to be exposed anymore than we have to be.
Are there available spaces in the garage?
I'm sure there are, so.
I asked, uh, Stacy before I came down today. She thinks there's only two or three spots there. I don't know that for a fact, that's just what she reported to. But that would be an ideal solution.
I would think so, and anyone that's not able to park there, maybe they could have the placards.
Within the last year, someone in our office wanted to get into the garage, and they were put on a waiting list.
Yeah, there, there's been a waiting list over there for years.
Does all this fall under the parking czar over here? Okay.
I'm very grateful for my parking spot, so I'm not going to complain about parking personally. It's very nice.
My initial thoughts would be make, hopefully, we could find space in the garage and supply placards to anyone displaced.
And again, this is something we'll be reaching ahead, coming next spring when we.
I'd like to be helpful if there's a, a way to put together a formal request with Kenny, kind of all of these items that we can discuss and approve. I think it'd be good to have a, a budget for and appreciate Rocky working with you and looking ahead at some of these things, so.
And the, for the remodeling type of work, I can easily meet with Kenny and get that put together. The, the file moving is a whole different.
Yeah, maybe.
You've got to find a location, anticipate the cost of moving.
Uh, I'm sorry to draw this out, but how often is it accessed? Is it every week?
That's a great question. I, I would say it probably is not accessed every week, and I would venture to say it's probably accessed at least once or twice a month.
Okay.
The files are old, they, they are definitely old, but there are always requests for people wanting their old records or anything else for a lot of different reasons. People could want to get into those, those files, whether it be background check processes or any number of things. People have reasons to want to get to them.
Okay.
It's often enough that the clerks that go over there have their own key access to get down in that secure elevator, so.
Okay.
And of course, it used to be when the clerk was right there, it was very easy. They just would write down the elevator and got them out, they have to go across the street, but that's easy enough. But of course, that won't be there in a year or so. But I appreciate your time and, uh, the opportunity to present these to you, and I'll set up a meeting with Kenny and try and get some more specifics on some of these items.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
All right. Moving on to board concerns. Go ahead, Jeremy.
I'm going to be leaving to Kosovo in a few days with a state partnership program for Iowa for one week unrelated to the conflict in the Ukraine. Um, our military is helping theirs, um, to formulate a chaplaincy for the first time in their country's young histories since independence. So, I'll not be able to call in, but we'll be back, uh, hopefully for the next meeting.
All right.
I will not be in Kosovo, but I will be in Florida next week, and I will call in.
Same thing, same thing, Kosovo, Florida.
Farther east.
That's right. There's Kissimmee, Florida. Yeah. Where in Florida?
Uh, near Orlando.
Okay.
I will be here to kind of pour the gas to go anywhere else, though.
What's that?
I used, I used to live in Winter Park in Orlando. Anything for? All right, so Community Economic Development Director, um, I hadn't put that out for replacement yet. So, see if anybody wanted to come up with any other kind of solutions on that department, but, uh, I've gotten two calls from mayors in the last week questioning whether or not we're going to fill that position because they feel it's needed. That was the person that did a lot of outreach to them. So, if anybody's got ideas, please get them for the agenda by next Tuesday, or if you guys both can be gone, maybe we'll wait another week. Also, on that final rule on demolition, uh, Joshua, it's page one-thirty-three through one-thirty-seven, so I think it does have some kind of provision where we could potentially use that for Prairie Hills. Anybody else from the board? Or you?
When you're done, I got one.
I'm done.
Okay, um, Andrew from Emergency Service came to me, and they need to get a oversized mortuary stretcher because we're going to assume the transfer to deceased citizens, and we need something to transport them in. It is required to have it. Um, it runs around fifteen-hundred bucks. We can buy a used one for fifteen-hundred from Ida County funeral home over there, or we can buy a new one for the same, approximately the same price. I guess we're just getting the consensus, go ahead and pay for it. It's not in his budget, but we'd probably pay for it, get her out gaming revenues for possibly, harp money. But they need to do it to get started when they start transporting, so these are cheap, normally about four-thousand. And it hasn't passed you one-thousand-plus pounds.
I guess if we need a consensus like that, it'd probably have to be on the agenda, you know, thinking about that, but.
Uh, the price overnight account, it may not last that long.
Sure. Well, I mean, you can always just buy it and then ask for a budget amendment of some kind, right?
Yep. You just need to know where the money is.
Right.
Do you ever come from gaming or harp money?
Sure.
But give him, I guess, give him the permission, go ahead and buy it, and then come back to the board.
Well.
Not after the fact, but.
If he needs to know right away, I don't know. I mean, I think you'd find funds from Marpa or something to pay for it myself.
I would think gaming would be fine.
I do too. I don't know if it'd be mitigating COVID with a stretcher for the deceased.
Well, you're mitigating the dead bodies.
I think Keith's already stated the point that it's not something that the board can act on now.
Well, he can go ahead and buy it, and then hopefully the board approves the expenditure.
Right. All righty.
Is this an emergency that we can add to the agenda?
Well, we'll add it next week. We can buy the new one anytime.
Well, let's buy the, why would we not buy the new one, though, if it's the same? Why would we not?
Well, 'cause if it's a used one, if it was like a higher-end model on sale, you know.
We'll put it on again next week.
You'd probably want to investigate them, you know?
I mean.
I mean, would you rather have a used King Ranch or a brand-new like Kia, you know?
I'm going to afford a new King Ranch.
I know, that's what I'm saying, they're the same price. All right, what's that, Jeremy?